As we're going straight into executive session tonight, I think we're gonna go ahead and fudge it and do this a minute or two early. So I think that we're good. A regular meeting of the Prosper ISD Board of Trustees has hereby been called to order Monday, May 19th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, close enough, in the Prosper ISD boardroom. I will go ahead and take us into executive session. We will be back out here at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, we are now back from executive session. The time is 7:12 PM. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Webb, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, Mr. Van Wolf, and myself, Bill Beavers. Let's see here. We're now returning from closed session. The time is, like I said, 7:12, 7:13. Now, the Board of Trustees extends a heartfelt gratitude to our entire Prosper ISD community. We're deeply appreciative of our residents who approved a $2.7 billion bond for new school construction, our dedicated teachers and staff who tirelessly serve our students and families, our parents who support our teachers and campuses through volunteering and partnering with us in their child's education, our exceptional campus and district leaders whom we believe are the finest in the great state of Texas and continuously strive for excellence. Your collective commitment to Prosper ISD is what makes our district thrive. Thank you for choosing and supporting our schools. Mr. Van Wolf, you have the invocation this evening.
Got it. Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for everyone in this room tonight and those beyond these walls. Thank you for another amazing school district here in Prosper ISD. Lord, we celebrate the students and staff here tonight, not just the accolades in the classroom, on the field, but in life as well. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon our district. Lord, we ask that you be with our families, our administrators, our staff, and our students as they embark on their next journey and they take on the summer here ahead and the coming days. Lord, we pray that has a hedge of protection over those, Lord, as they travel, and we celebrate all the amazing things we are so blessed to be a part of here in this incredible district, Lord. As always, we ask for wisdom and discernment, Lord, as we make decisions that impact the students and staff of Prosper ISD. We ask that you be with us in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The Board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels. All right. Let's see here. That brings us up to... Oh, I've gotta read this part. "As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions in real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least 72 hours before the meeting." Upcoming, we've got some important dates. We've got graduation at the end of this week, which I know, looking out at some guys that are excited about that, and we are excited to celebrate y'all. And speaking of celebrations, Dr. Ferguson.
Yes, we have many. I would like to have Tripp Reslin, if you will come forward, and Rai Leo, and Rocco Sampaio, which is my favorite. And then Mr. Michael Logan. In February, Prosper ISD film students, this time will decide me, they participated in the UIL State Film Festival to not be recognized. Three students from Prosper High School for your achievements at this film festival. So I wanted to say congratulations to all three of you. I know some of you are returning. This is not your first time to be recognized, and of course, Mr. Logan always does an exceptional job, and this is not his first time to be recognized as the instructor. So I want to thank you for the work that you're doing, but also for you all's continued work and deep work, impressive what you do, and most people don't realize how long it takes to make it known that there are three people right here who do it, correct? Yes. Congratulations. Good. Congratulations to them.
Nice work.
You might have heard some clinging of medals because our boys UIL 5A Soccer State Championship team is here tonight, so if y'all will please come forward, all of the team and their coaches. So this team is bringing home the second state championship for Walnut Grove High School, and it is our very own boys soccer team. If you watched online, or maybe you were present, it was a nail biter, and Major Superintendent was streaming on the sidelines and trying to fix her face multiple times because y'all had me as a nervous wreck. It ended though beautifully, and it was probably one of the greatest moments that probably most of y'all have had. I know it was a great moment for me to be able to watch the community really rallying around this team and the coaches and just the school in general, for people to make that trek down to Georgetown, Texas to watch. So I want to tell all of you, congratulations, and thank you for honoring Prosper ISD and specifically Walnut Grove High School in such an exemplary way. I'd like to ask Coach Jeff Smith, who's with us tonight, if you will come up. He is our athletic director, and he does not get the credit that he truly deserves. He is an incredible man and does incredible things for kids silently behind the scenes, asking for no praise whatsoever. And teams get to this state level because coaches have support and student athletes have a great AD behind them, making sure that everything is taken care of. So I want to say thank you to him as well. But congratulations to each of you. I know we've already gotten Lea Raff up in the high school, correct? All right, so you're already inside famous. Congratulations. Very good. Congratulations. Hi, girls.
Congrats, guys.
Thank you.
Nice work, guys.
Congrats. Proud of you guys. Very good. Best game of the year. All right. Next up, we have boys UIL 5A Golf State Meet. Bringing home the 13th championship from Walnut Grove High School this year is the boys golf team. It's the first time in Prosper ISD history that one school has won three state championships, and they were all at Walnut Grove High School. If you're a member of the golf team, come on up, because I know you're here. And also any of our coaches, Coach Full Star, I know you are, maybe you are. Yes, you are. There we are. Okay, everybody see. So this team finished here with first six first-place wins, nine top finishes, six individual wins, and 16 top-five finishes. The Wildcats were district and regional champs on the road, state champions. Grant Clapp led the Wildcats to victory with a third-place individual finish. And we want to thank them so much for also honoring and really representing at the highest level possible not only Walnut Grove High School, but Prosper ISD. You're making our name known, and we appreciate that. So great job, everybody. Good job. Moving on to track and field, our UIL 6A Track and Field State Meet, Nora Ryan, Coach Crisp, and Coach Alford, if you are here, please come forward. So this is Nora Ryan, 800-meter champion. Coach Jackie Crisp, Coach Alford cannot be here tonight, but we certainly appreciate everything that she's done. Nora is the 800-meter district, area, regional, and state champion, 6A. I just want to let that sink in for just a minute. And if you've ever run an 800-meter, it's thrilling, absolutely thrilling, because it's now a two-lap sprint, pretty much, and you don't get to slow down. And so Nora, very impressive. I had the opportunity too, in the fall, to talk to Nora, because she was on our cross-country team as well. So literally running all year long and competing all year long. She'll be attending Sam Houston State University in the fall on a full athletics scholarship, which also does not always happen. They don't always give those out. So congratulations, Nora. We're super proud of you. Next up, we have a returner also to the boardroom, and that is Owen Horstle. If you will please come forward. Rock Hill High School with his coach, Coach Smith. You might have remembered Owen from last year as a freshman, you were the gold medalist, correct? Do I remember correctly? All right. And so he went back to compete again, but he didn't bring home just one medal, he brought two. Go ahead, y'all, show it, flex it. Owen's in the 100-meter wheelchair division, second place, and the 400-meter wheelchair division, third place. Owen achieved personal best in both events. He was named a 2024 U.S. Paralympics Track and Field High School Allemere. What you all need to know too is Owen is a sophomore. We saw two more years to go, right? More medals to rack up. I love him. Congratulations. UIL 5A Track and Field State Meet. I know I saw Coach Knight, Coach Hart here, I believe. Coach Knight is. And we have the winning Lauren Rogers with us. Triple jump. Did you want to do triple jump across there? Just to show, because some people may not know what triple jump is. So second place in the triple jump, long jump, third place. Lauren holds a school record in both the long jump and the triple jump at Walnut Grove High School. So congratulations. Show me the medals. We have UIL 5A State Tennis. This actually just happened last Friday, so we wanted to make sure that we got these two young men in, and certainly the functional limits. We have Blake Anderson and Mateo Mahia. Mahia, I knew I was gonna mess it up. Blake and Mateo won eight tournaments this year. Not only did the duo go undefeated for the season, they did not drop a single set. They both finished the season with academic honors. Let's clap for them. Blake receiving the Texas High School Coaches Association Academic All-Stay Honorable Mention. Congratulations to you both for some medals. There we go. Oh, he's got it in his pocket. Okay. Because they're double, so they play together. I like that.
Teammate.
Valedictorian. So last month, we have PCIS, which is our Prosper Career Independent Study, and, well, she was busy. So we have Chloe Phillips with us tonight, who is the valedictorian. And Shana, is he also here? There you are. Very good. Come on up. Now, Chloe might be saying right now, I don't know this kid, and is he actually in the running, or are we gonna be on stage? No, we're not, because that's Rock Hill High School, and this is Prosper High School. So we've got two different high schools, but they were busy with PCIS. So we recognize our valedictorians and salutatorians at last month's meeting, and due to their commitments that they had, they were unable to attend. But we didn't want to miss this opportunity to honor both of you for your high academic excellence in everything that you've done. When students perform at this high-level academic, it makes every single student in the district better. So I want to say thank you for that. Both of these students will be graduating this week, because we are heading into the Super Bowl of Education, known as Graduation, and they will both have a chance to be able to speak to their entire class along with all the people who come, all the family members. So I know it's gonna be a powerful speech, because you both have been just exemplary students in Prosper ISD. So thank you so much for everything that you've done, and best of luck to both of you. Let me take a quick photo. We also have the CREST Award for Counseling Excellence tonight. CREST counselors reinforcing excellence for students is what that stands for in the state of Texas. This award recognizes programs in Texas with exemplary comprehensive school counseling programs that are committed to improving the lives of students in the academic, career, and personal social domain. Last year, one of our campuses received this honor, and tonight, we are pleased to recognize two campuses. Bryce Dunnington, who serves as the counselor at Lilly Island Elementary. Ms. Grace, you should come up. You're the principal. And then we have Brooke Stinson, who is Windsor Ranch counselor, and she is two-time, this is her second year, for the CREST Award recipient. Mr. Dunnington, come on up. Ms. Falls, because Mr. Dunnington's leaving, but Ms. Falls is going to be the principal and is serving as the A.T. at Windsor. Don't hesitate, it's getting hot in here. Congratulations. Truly, our counselors are unsung heroes. They fix all the things on the back end and do incredible work. So thank you both, and Bryce, for everything you did. Right, I think I'm celebrated out.
I think that we might have one more to talk about. Is there a...
Oh, yeah. So there's that. So, pretty big news. The HEB Excellence in Education, I know that we announced that we're one of the top five finalists in the state of Texas for large districts. Competition was pretty tough. We had Spring Ranch, we had Tom Ball, we had Medlochium, and we had Mansfield. HEB, they sent a team out, former educators, leaders in the state, and people from different organizations, and they came in and they visited curriculum day with us, spending an inordinate amount of time at Jones Middle School. And I must add that this was the Wednesday before spring break. If anybody's been in a school the Wednesday before spring break, let's just say, she's humming. And so they came, they visited at Jones Middle School, and then we took a trip over to Prosper High School to visit some of our high school students as well. They walked in and out of classrooms, they were quizzing students, they were quizzing principals, they were quizzing every teacher they could talk to, and they sat down for about an hour and quizzed me, interviewed me, and then said, if you could say in one sentence about Prosper ISD, what would you say? And I said, Prosper ISD is the community. And they said, so is there anything else? And I said, that's it. At the end of the day, it is the community and how we all come together to rally around our students, our staff, our parents, and everybody working together, even when sometimes it's tough. And so we went down to Austin and were lined up. I'm having a little bit of shade thrown on me from unnamed superintendent. I think you have to, like, apply two or three times to even get this. I'm like, well, maybe we're defeated. And then they said Prosper ISD. And it was a pretty cool moment, because what this award is, is it's not for one individual person, it's for this entire community. And when you think about 32,000-plus students, 3,800-plus employees, and then probably 65,000-plus parents, and then a whole entire community, that's a pretty cool honor and award for a district to get. And I refer to this as the Super Bowl of Education. This is like the big one. And so for Prosper ISD to be able to bring home this award to the community, it was a very proud moment for so many of us to be able to truly honor the incredible work that's going on in this district. And especially as we head into graduation, I had a conversation with a parent today and was saying, thank you. Thank you, I know that my kid is ready. And that's what we want. That is the dream come true. And so that is what we're striving for, each and every student that we touch the life of. So I want to say congratulations to the team, also to our school board, because without their support and ongoing wavering support, we could not do anything that we do without these seven individuals. So they are a huge part of this award. There's a little short video that we're gonna show you, and this was actually the video that they showed that night at the board's assembly. And so we will watch that now.
I'm Holly Ferguson. I am the superintendent of Prosper Independent School District. I became the superintendent in 2020, and during that time, we have opened, or will open, three high schools. What we're trying to do is always evolve and change with what are the current trends that are happening in education, but also what are our students saying that they want? And what are our teachers saying that they need in order to be able to best educate our kids? As we all know, COVID was kind of a rough time, and schools were closed off to a lot of people and visitors. At that point in time, what was born was Prosper Promise. So I had the Superintendent Parent Advisory, we had Prosper University for parents who might want to be a school board member, we had campus tours going on that were led by our parent, and the list went on. And so that was a great way to be able to connect with them. Just about every single night, I'm at some either fine art or athletic event, and I actually connect with a lot of parents and staff members at those events, as well as our students. One of the reasons that I love being a teacher in Prosper ISD is we truly do what is best for our kiddos. But not only do we take care of our kiddos, but we take care of each other. The extracurricular activities, the just the professional development that we get is all geared towards how can we be better for our students? I believe that the heart of the community is the school, and I'm just so grateful to live here, to be a parent here, but then also to have an opportunity to be a teacher here.
But teachers do a really good job here at kind of making a personal connection with you. They need me to reach out an email for me, or they kind of pull me aside in class if, you know, I need help or anything. I miss a lot of time for football and things like that, so I was able to come into class, and they would pull me aside and kind of help me on, like, kind of give me one-on-one. So I mean, obviously, that can happen in college, but, you know, Prosper, that's kind of how they kind of prepare you and kind of get you ready. They kind of take time to help you out if you need it. It's a great fit for me, just planning for my future and, you know, getting ready for the world I was planning for me later.
We have a very involved community, and they show up, and it is a key to our success.
So we have an HEB that is coming to Prosper this summer, and so we're very excited about that. I did give that as part of my speech, like, we're really excited we're getting an HEB. The district was awarded $100,000, and so we're certainly gonna try to figure out a way to get that back to our staff members in some way or form, because truly, they are the heartbeat that make this place run, and then the kids come in and that heartbeat just starts beating even faster. Certainly very honored, this is the cup that we won, and so you'll probably see some different things that happen with that as we get into August to the beginning of the year, and really how we celebrate each of our campuses and school communities and departments. And so that is to be said and to be coming very soon.
Serve for Prosper. Okay, we will now go into a quick intermission. Students, feel free to stay if y'all would like to learn some things about the governmental process, but if not, y'all are free to go at this time. I'll be AC, we'll catch up a little bit, so we'll see. Okay, this takes us to number eight, public comment on agenda items. Let's see here, the board will hear comments from the public at this time. Individuals wishing to speak must have added their name and topic to the public comment form online or in person prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you did not sign up by the stated deadline, you will not be permitted to speak. Please listen carefully to these. Each speaker will be given three minutes. When your time is up, please stop speaking and return to your seat. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. The board has designated two times for people to speak this evening, so we have got one on agenda and then one on non-agenda-related items, so that will come here a little bit later on in the evening, but that is coming up. Let's see here, with that being said, three minutes, Mrs. Church, you have the floor.
Good evening. Over the last three years, I've watched as Mr. Linker has proven he cannot be trusted with confidential information, constantly creating noise and chaos to make himself look better while sharing information he shouldn't when it is not yet meant for the public. Earlier today, the district released a statement regarding claims that were made by Mr. Linker during the school board campaign. These claims made by Mr. Linker, very publicly, at meet-and-greets, on doorsteps to the Dallas Morning News, during Meet the Candidates, and in one-on-one meetings with voters during this campaign, directly implicated a district vendor, our superintendent, our mayor, and both current and past elected officials, while deliberately targeting myself and Mr. Bray. I am here tonight to ask why Mr. Linker intentionally held this alleged evidence he received in October until this campaign began. If he had evidence in October, which he claims was the case, why was it not brought to the board until December? Furthermore, after executive session at the February 26th board meeting, the agenda item on retaining additional counsel was addressed, and no motion was made by any board members. After it had already been spread to the public and after discussion in executive session, why was there no motion made, but the claims and accusations to the public instead intensified? Why did a school board trustee feel compelled to speak to the public prior to speaking with all fellow school board members? If he was willing to speak so freely about it, why wasn't the evidence shared with the public as well? Has Mr. Linker violated his oath of confidentiality and/or the Open Meetings Act in order to further his political gain? If so, are there plans to hold him accountable in the future? And speaking of evidence, deliberate and intentional damage was caused to many throughout this campaign, but when you've lived here for 20 years, roots run deep. While it was clear that Mr. Linker was willing to win at all costs, it was also apparent that he wasn't always aware of who he was meeting with, based on interactions and feedback I've received and continue to receive from the public and others who met with him.
Okay, that takes us to informational reports.
Okay, so our student enrollment, you can see that we're in ad at this time, year over year, of 2,960 students. Certainly, as board members, I've been providing with those 25, 26, because we have new enrollments rolling in. And so we're about 450, 500 kids right now to the ad, just from April enrollment opening up for our new students. And then our bond from 2019, as well as 2013, an update on all of the projects that we have currently going on in the district. an update on all of the projects that we have currently going on in the district.
I also have, on the construction topic at this time, Dr. Ferguson, a statement to read that was put out on the website today. In December 2024, Prosper ISD Board President was made aware of questions related to PISD construction projects handled by Pogue Construction in 2018. From the outset, we treated these concerns with the utmost seriousness as part of our unwavering commitment to transparency and financial accountability. We immediately retained an independent outside law firm to conduct a thorough and impartial investigation of these concerns. The investigation found no evidence of financial impropriety, breach of contract, or any other action resulting in harm to Prosper ISD. Additionally, it confirmed that our existing financial controls and oversight procedures in place at the time were functioning appropriately. Those financial controls and oversight procedures have only been strengthened since the time of the projects in question in 2018. For over 20 years, Pogue Construction has been and continues to be a valuable partner in building excellent learning spaces for our teachers and students. They have continuously delivered our buildings on time and on budget. The investigation lasted several months and involved an extensive review of all relevant financial documents and records. Our board participated in multiple meetings with legal counsel to ensure a complete understanding of the findings. We left no stone unturned as we worked diligently to uncover the facts. We want to reassure our community that Prosper ISD remains steadfast in upholding the highest standards of financial responsibility. Our board takes its fiduciary duties to taxpayers seriously and will continue to maintain vigilant oversight of all contracts and financial matters. Fiscal accountability reports and awards can be found on our website. As we move forward, we thank the community for its patience throughout this process. Prosper ISD will continue to work with its contractors and other vendors, including Pogue Construction, ensuring appropriate oversight at every step. We remain focused on delivering outstanding educational facilities for our students while being responsible stewards of public resources. The Board of Trustees has the utmost confidence in our district leadership and staff to manage the funds entrusted to us to educate our students. Our district's leadership is unmatched, and we are grateful for their longstanding steadfast commitment to our community. I know we've got some representatives from Pogue here this evening. Thank you, guys, for your partnership and what y'all do.
Okay. So the strategic priorities. We embarked in a comprehensive process for the 2025-2030 strategic planning. Over 400 staff members, students, parents, community members, bringing them in to really have a voice into this plan that would drive our work moving forward with mission and vision into the coming years until 2030. Being able to connect with our community, whether through parent surveys or face-to-face opportunities through listening circles, was an absolute joy and the best way to really get down to the root of what was needed for our students moving forward. So you'll see in the main priorities that we have, together we champion. And so supporting every student on a journey to excellence, and really, how do we make that happen when we're looking at each one of the individual needs? And as you all know, in a fast-growth district, individual needs change every single day because we have new students walking in every day. But I believe and I know that we have the best leaders, the best teachers and staff in the state of Texas to really take each one of those young learners and to make their dreams a success story for them moving forward, and certainly rooting that in kindness and being a good human being. We also want to cultivate, creating meaningful connections across our growing community. You just saw the HEB Excellence in Education video, and as I explained, when I was asked about the question of what would you say Prosper ISD is, it was immediately, it was the community. Whether we're getting along or we're not, it is the community every single day. And our students rise and fall by the strength of the community that surrounds them. And so really, how do we proactively plan and look at the future and making sure that the new family members and the new members of our staff and the new community members are really becoming part of our culture of excellence in Prosper ISD? Together, we empower, as the board has given in their mission is that they want all learners learning at all levels. And we really hinge a lot on that statement right there when it comes to every single student, every single staff member, but also the growth pattern for our parents and our community, because we must take everyone along with us and empower them. So really, developing our people to really lead and inspire and be able to embrace the immense growth that we have and really embrace that, not see that as a challenge, but really, how is this an opportunity moving forward for every single one of us? And then also, looking at just that well-being of our employees. I know that we continually have conversations about how do we uplift and power and really rally around these amazing educators so that we can retain and keep them in our district, but also recruit as we bring on many new employees this year and the coming years? And then together, we prosper. We're so lucky to have the name of our school district to be such an important word in our world. And when you think about prosper and what that means is how do we unite in a shared purpose with honoring the individuality of each and every person who comes our way, actively involving our families and their children's education? You heard campus tours. We have parents, and they are literally running that on all 27 campuses, soon to be 31 campuses. And so it's how do we lift that up, inspire, and really show what this community is about, but also not forget our new families who come and join us, but also not forget our families who've been with us for many, many years in the district and how we all come together to work around and truly prosper? And you can see, this is a logo that you're probably going to see quite a bit of moving forward as this is our continual reminder of what are our four core values and beliefs, which is champion, cultivate, empower, and prosper.
Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda this evening. Everyone has seen this parts. Let's see here. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second? Oh, second. Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a quick note. I need to abstain from consent item 10B due to professional reasons.
Perfect, thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda? That is all seven of us, none opposed, so that passes. That brings us to item 11A, consideration of possible action regarding the GMP for the multipurpose complex.
Mr. Shirley with us this evening, who is a lead on construction, so a little bit of a change. Glad to have him with us. He's been, obviously, in the district for about 17 years as an employee, but many, many years as a community member and parent in the district. And he's been working in the construction department, learning all of these things from the last several years, and really partnering with Huckabee, Pogue, VOK, Crossland, all of our different partners, along with our construction team. Welcome, Mr. Shirley.
Good evening, board. I'm here tonight to present to you the guaranteed maximum price for our multipurpose complex. With me tonight, I have representatives from Pogue Construction, Robie Bloodsoe, Andrew Choice, Bradley Dorr, and Brandon Colquitt, and James Pearson will actually join me up here in just a moment to present to you. Along with Pogue, we have Huckabee Architects with us, Joe Tremblay, and Kristen Cullen. Tonight, we're coming to you with the guaranteed maximum price for this multipurpose complex. This GMP includes three projects. That will include collectively be one GMP, and that total package is $122,324,522. Those three projects at this multipurpose complex will be a site package, an administration building, and an outdoor learning and community center. As we dive into the projects themselves, this is a site map for the multipurpose complex. This location is due east of Rogers Middle School, just north of 380, off of Lakewood Drive, and what will be constructed, Richland Boulevard. This particular site has multiple projects on it. If you look towards the bottom left, we have a space there for a future auditorium. And next to it is the outdoor learning community center. And then next to it is the administration building. What this graphic doesn't show is just to the north of that administration building is also another project site, a future project site that we haven't determined exactly what will go there. Initial conversations were that it would be a performing arts center, but we have gotten a partnership with the city of Frisco. Not sure how that's going to play out, but know that in that future project site, we have options there, whether it's a school or a potential outdoor, I'm sorry, a campus or a performing arts center. The next project that we're going to talk about is the administration building itself. We've been waiting for the right time to have this conversation. The board's vision, the district's vision is always that schools come first and administration building comes second. And we've reached a place in our bond program that we have the bonding capacity to continue to build schools and to build an administration building and it not have a negative effect on us for future school sites. As you're aware, why would we need this? The current building that we have, we've got a few issues and concerns here. One of those is because of the iron pipes that supply water here is drinkable water. We do have some significant discrepancies in heating and cooling throughout this entire building. This building has served us well for 60 years. It will continue to do so if this new building is passed tonight. But we have major concerns. Our biggest concern is space. We are out of space. This was a K-12 school. We've divided all these classrooms up multiple times. We've reached our capacity here. We have brought on portable buildings. I think we could all agree that's not a long-term solution for the district needs. We've reached capacities in those portables. A few years ago, we purchased the Mayhard Family Resource Center. We're at capacity there. We also have leased space behind the Sonic, and we'll be at capacity there as well. So space has been our biggest concern with this site. This new building, if constructed, would provide relief in all of those areas. It would also give us a larger boardroom. As you can see, the last few meetings, we've had standing room-only crowds and for a place for our students and our staff, parents and community members to have a seat, this boardroom would accommodate that. Also at this site would be professional development rooms that would double what we have. We have two professional development rooms in this building that we try to meet the demands of learning and growing our teachers with these two classrooms. This facility here would provide additional professional development opportunities. I'm sure you're aware, as we continue to grow in our student enrollment, we'll grow in our staff and teacher enrollment, and that will require more space to provide that teaching and learning opportunities for our staff. Another thing that this building would provide that we're lacking right now with the district-level staff is meeting spaces and collaboration between our departments. Many of our departments are divided throughout the district or throughout this campus. The opportunity for these departments to all be together will only increase communication and collaboration and will just continue to make us better. The third project, and you can see to the right of this slide, is the community center, outdoor learning center as well. Here's a back rendering of that. The top story would be the community center, and below are learning areas for the outdoor learning. Those are indoor areas. There's actually an outdoor learning experience as well. There's a pavilion. The unique thing about the pavilion, it's a shared space with the town of Prosper. We had an agreement with the town. Behind this building here is a soil conservation pond. The town is going to develop a park, and they'll have shared use with that pavilion once the park is built. This outdoor learning is a kindergarten through 12th grade experience. Our goal here is that we will develop this site and replace the fifth-grade science experiment, the fifth-grade science camp that our students travel to. There's some costs associated with that travel. And us developing this site, I think the long-term goal is that this becomes our science camp for our fifth graders and a K-12 learning experience for all the students in the district. The upper portion of this rendering is the community room. It's modeled just like the community room at the stadium. The community room at the stadium is booked daily and nightly. As we continue to grow as a district, the demands for events that we're turning away now because we don't have the ability to host, this will provide some relief in that area as well. So at this time, I'll ask for Mr. Brandon Colquitt and Mr. Pearson to come up and share more details about these three projects.
Good evening to you both.
Hello.
Welcome.
We decided to wear ties tonight in honor of Dr. Bradley, but I don't think ours is quite as crisp as his usually are.
It's not.
Good evening, Dr. Ferguson, President Beavers, Board of Trustees. I'm Brandon Colquitt. I serve as the Vice President of Pogue Construction's McKinney office. This is James Pearson. He's our senior project manager over all of the Prosper ISD projects that are currently going on. Honored to be here before you tonight, requesting approval of the GMP for the multipurpose complex. This request comes after over a year of coordination with Huckabee's team and Prosper ISD construction staff. I'm happy to tell you, we did have a very favorable turnout on bid day for this project. We received 342 trade partner proposals on this project. So that shows two things to us. Number one, Prosper ISD is a great place to work. And number two, you guys are getting the best bang for your buck in a highly competitive marketplace. James Pearson has kind of led the charge for our team as far as coordinating this thing through the pre-con process and the assembly of the GMP, and kind of strategically breaking this thing out into three packages to once again bring best value to you guys. I'm going to let him share some info as far as what's contained in each of those packages.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Mr. Shirley, as well. Thank you, Prosper ISD, and all the Board of Trustees. As Brandon stated, I'm the senior project manager at Pogue, so you get the opportunity to deal with me all the way from the start and pre-con to warranty on the job as well. So you can't get away from me too quick. As Brandon and Mr. Shirley hit on, we're going to go through three projects as one GMP, multipurpose complex. Naturally, the site is the first thing that goes in place. So just a couple of data points as we were looking on a previous slide of the site. You're roughly about 53 acres worth on this site, serving about 572 parking spots. With this site, as we stated, a multipurpose complex. It's going to have different variables on it that's going to serve the auditorium, which will be a plug-and-play eventually when we get to the auditorium. Then we'll have the Then we'll have the outdoor community center. We'll have the administrative building and also the, we'll call it the future building for right now, depending on what that will be in the future. Some of those variables that will be, we'll call shared services, is it will have a well and a tank on this site, and that's going to serve to basically put water, to water all the beautiful landscaping that's going to be out on this 53 acres worth. There's also the Richland Boulevard, so we'll have a cross section, if you will, or a traffic light, or maybe a roundabout, depending on what the Town of Prosper decides on, as we're still currently working on that now. But that cost is currently in this GMP, so there would be no future change orders to this GMP. There's some primary services, gas, electric. There's also a detention pond, landscaping, fencing, utilities. And grading is a big aspect, is there's about 10 to 17 foot worth of cut and fill on the administrative building. Moving over to the administrative building, so a couple of data points here as well, as you are, this is a community center, but the previous slide as well, is roughly about 120,000 square foot worth. I always say three and a half stories because there's a basement level that's really for the service facilities of the building, but majority of the meat and potatoes of it is about three stories worth of the building. We'll have a boardroom, so today we're sitting in the boardroom, but this will be where we'll future, it'll be held. There's four elevators and also will serve 2,300 occupants as well. Multiple offices, huddle rooms will be in this administrative building as well. And then sliding over to the outdoor community center, which is, like Mr. Shirley said, it's the building that's on to the right side of this slide. Also, the next slide, you'll see the back part of it. So there's about also a 10 to 17 foot cut and fill on this as well, but the front will drop down and it'll go to a two-story, as you saw there in the back. It's about 22,000 square foot worth, as Mr. Shirley stated. Bottom level, learning, library area, first level, community room. And then on the backside, you have some seating area, which is just the. And then kind of wrapping it up, Brandon stated that we did get amazing coverage on this project, roughly about 350 bids. With that, we were able to get very competitive numbers, but there are some aspects in relationship to tariffs on the job as well. Where we have been seeing that in today's market is mainly in the steel subcontractors, also in the cold form metal framing as well. So you'll see that in our drywall, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and also fire sprinkler. But in relationship to tariff, it's not accounting for any future tariffs. It's anything that we've seen today currently in places in this current GMP that's in front of you guys. But with comparables also, even with the tariffs and any other aspects into today's economy, we've looked at two comps. One is a project that we have just completed. It's the McKinney Town Hall, obviously ours, our project. That's also in, that's comparable to this current GMP as of today's dollars. There's also another project, which is the Northwest ISD Admin. This is actually under that GMP, which is roughly about two and a half years ago that building was in place. Even with looking at in today's market with tariffs and any other aspects, like Brandon stated, with the amazing coverage we have with our trade partners, it's in line or even under the budget or comparable budgets as well. And with that, if you guys have any questions?
Long as you tell us that the AC works, I think that we would.
The AC will work. I typically don't. So it will definitely work.
It's a little humid.
Yes. Okay. Well, I guess if you guys will stay there for just a second, let's go ahead and get a motion and then a second. From there, we can have discussion and questions. So with that being said, is there a motion on 11A?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the guaranteed maximum price for the multipurpose complex as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Okay, questions or discussion on this facility?
Yeah, as in pass, I'll be abstaining from this vote tonight for professional reasons.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Dial. I know that one thing that Mr. Shirley, you talked about was, hey, we wait on this as it, while the focus is obviously students, this has now gotten to the point where we can go ahead and do this building with bond funds and it doesn't affect the.
The impact on being able to help our students.
Thank you. So anyway, we've got that. Any other questions or discussions on this from anyone?
I just want to bring up, this was supposed to be built in 2019 with the 2019 bond and because of the demand and the student need and the lack of commercial and predominantly residential taxable values, it just was not possible. And I think about if we'd built it in 2019, how much cheaper it would have been, but this is certainly a project that we need to see through to all the reasons that Mr. Shirley gave of all the demands that we have on this facility and many other facilities that are trying to house our staff. The facility is built to, we did look at that, for 55,000 students, so when we're at complete buildout, so it's not just a, hey, this is who we have, this is what this will do, it's to serve this district when we looked at this.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Is all of us with the exception of Mr. Dial, none opposed? So the GMP will pass on 11A. Thank you, gentlemen.
Nice job.
Yes. That brings us to 11B, consideration and possible action regarding renaming of fund balance commitment.
I move that the board approve the renaming of the fund balance commitment as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Discussion, questions, anything? Dr. Ferguson, we are just simply renaming this balance. It's just a change of name on this one, nothing too terribly crazy on that. So, okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? That is all six of us, none opposed? That brings us to 12, public comment on non-agenda-related items. Same things from previously will apply three minutes to the speaker and Mrs. Churchman or Mr. Churchman? Mrs. Churchman. I don't know if you've got time. We'll give you a few extra seconds.
I just wanted to actually speak to the board about considering aligning with our neighboring districts in terms of the GPA policy that we are using currently for our fine arts students and our athletes, specifically the juniors and seniors, because I look back and I can find as far back as 2021 where the Frisco's policy is that students entering 11th or 12th grade in the 21 and 22 school year have the opportunity to exclude one fine arts or athletics credit from their class rank and GPA calculations. And to quote the counselor from Liberty High School, "This option allows students who have a GPA of 5.0 or greater to continue their extracurricular activities without having to worry about their GPA dropping from the extracurricular class." This, of course, is because those classes that I mentioned, fine arts or athletics, are at an on-level grade point. Okay? The GPA exempt classes at the McKinney ISD, also as far back as 2021, states to encourage students to participate in upper-level courses and to retain and recruit these students. With specific interests, McKinney ISD will allow students to apply for a GPA exempt grading option. This is helpful for students and is available for juniors and seniors only. They do stipulate, of course, that there is some requirements such as athletics. They need to have a continuous enrollment for three or four years in the designated athletic course regardless of sport. And the fine arts students also need to have continuous enrollment for three or four years in band, color guard, choir, orchestra, theater, dance, and drill. So the reason I bring this up is because, specifically about junior and seniors, is because I spoke with someone in admin, communicated through email, and they shared that there was something being considered for 2031, but that is just far too long. That is far too long. The UT has already diminished to 5% for next year for its admittance rates. A&amp;M has already disclosed that they will be restricting enrollment, and it's very, very tight in those top 10%. And our students who want to go to a flagship school need to retain their top 10%. And if they're playing for our school, it makes it almost impossible, not totally impossible because we do have students who are in the top, but it is very challenging to do so. So I really am asking the board to consider before 2031, allowing our juniors and seniors to have an opportunity to preserve their GPA and also play for the school that they want to and not have to make the hard decision to choose GPA over playing in the band or playing for a sport. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to number 13, report from the superintendent.
Yes, so GO4, Superintendent Evaluation, is communication and community partnerships. Just a reminder for everyone, this is aligned to our current strategic plan, but there will be a rewrite with the board weighing in on that as we move into the upcoming school year. We were able to name our new agricultural facility after one of our longstanding 20-year agricultural teachers, Mr. Wade Shackelford. And so being able to really honor his life, his legacy and the work that he's done in Prosper ISD was a great day to be able to really show off that facility, but also really tell the story of Wade Shackelford and the impact that he had on Prosper ISD. Next, Special Olympics, one of the best days of the entire year, probably one of my favorite moments, was when Ava was doing the pledge, and then she said, we have to do the Texas pledge too, even though that wasn't on the script, but we must do that because that's what we do in schools. And so certainly tons of joy, lot of celebrating. Want to thank Robbie Fitzsimmons as well as Dr. Blair Hickey, really making sure that this event happens every single year. And certainly all of our sponsors that came out to just really make this a special, special day for all of our students, because in Prosper ISD, we believe in every single student being able to excel at their highest level and find joy in the journey of learning. And then meet the staff. We have two new elementaries coming on, and so we wanted to go ahead and start connecting with our community in each of those school communities. And so Mr. Dunnington and Ms. Morris, along with the staff members that they have hired for Smotherman Elementary, they were able to get out and really start connecting with those families and for them to be able to get some swag and kind of get the spirit of Smotherman Elementary started. And then we did the same thing at Thompson Elementary and able to be able to connect with the families and staff members that will be in that building. And then we'll roll through the summer, get those buildings officially turned over to us, and then we'll roll into dedication in probably about October. So that'll be another connection point for us and be able to see some of the students perform and really honor our namesakes. And then Ready, Set, Teach, I want to say thanks to Ms. Hunt. So she hosted all of our Ready, Set, Teach seniors that are at all three of our high schools. Such a great way to recruit and really be able to engage and talk to each of these aspiring educators. Each of these students have been working currently in either an elementary, middle, they don't go to high schools because they're in high school, but elementary and middle schools to be able to learn side by side with some of our amazing teachers, but really for us to talk about what this means for them and coming back to Prosper so that we can start that recruiting way in advance for these young men and women to return and make a difference in their own community.
Okay, that brings us to number 14, Board of Trustees' election results. At a special meeting on Tuesday, May 12, 2025, the board canvassed and certified the duly called May 3, 2025 election, which resulted in Jordan Dial being elected to a second term in place one, Kelly Cavender being elected to a third term in place three, and Garrett Linker being elected to a second term in place six. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank everyone who participated in the election process and made their voice heard at the polls. We will now swear in the candidates, Mr. Dial, then Mr. Cavender, and then Mr. Linker.
Ms. McCurry will come forward. Mr. Dial, if you want to invite your family to come up, I see them. Rowan's reading, Young Scholar.
I'm doing.
Oh.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Jordan Dial, do solemnly swear.
I, Jordan Dial, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the Office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Helen Cav- I, Helen Cavender, do solemnly swear.
I, Helen Cavender, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the Office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Garrett Linker, do solemnly swear.
I, Garrett Linker, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Prosper Independent School Board Trustee.
Of the Office of Prosper Independent School District School Board Trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, so at the start of the meeting, we had a closed session. We did take a couple of extra minutes so that we could stay out here and give you all a little bit of time back here this evening. So that will take us to item 16, items discussed in closed session, a consideration and possible action regarding hiring contract personnel. May I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. That brings us to Officer Elections, a consideration and possible action regarding board reorganization and election of officers. We will take this by position, so there will be three different motions on this. Is there a motion for Board President?
Mr. Beavers, I move that we table this one until after our second closed session.
I will second.
Okay, we will hold a vote on that then. All in favor of holding this after the closed session, raise your hand. That is three, all opposed. That is four, so that motion is denied. May I please have a motion in regards to Board Office of President?
Make a motion. I move that we make Bill Beaver President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. All, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? That is four, all oppose. That is three, motion passes. May I have a vote, motion for vice president?
I move that we nominate Deana Dixon as vice president.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is five, all oppose. That is two, motion passes on that. The third spot, a motion for secretary. I can make this motion. I make a motion that we move to make Mr. Van Wolf, board secretary. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? That is four, all oppose. That is three, motion passes. The time is now 8:24 PM, and that concludes our board meeting. Thank you so much for coming.